Dual citizenship is one thing that Liberians have been talking about, there's a debate about it. And also, we have a proposal uh that is up for you know referendum, yeah, it should be this uh October, but unfortunately, uh I think it has been extended, but we first of all want to know, uh do you support dual citizenship? If yes, then why?
But um yes, and and uh just for a disclaimer, um I wanna let my audience know that I served on um uh as as one of the coordinators uh for the Dual Citizenship Committee. Um that that was being spearheaded by uh Emmanuel Wetti. Uh that was uh organized by led by Yula, organized by a lot of diaspora organizations. So I was um was heading that in the Midwest and we had done some fundraisers here in Minnesota for that. And so I wanna put that on the table. And so I wanna say, yes, I I am a strong uh proponent of dual citizenship. Um and the why um is because um there are a lot of Liberians uh due to the Liberian civil war uh civil war. Um those choosing of theirs uh that find themselves in in foreign lands. Um and those countries have been really, really nice uh to a great extent um to those Liberians. And in order for for those people, uh a vast majority of them, uh to actualize um their dream, their dreams, living in those countries. And and also try to solidify the roots of their families that were raised in those countries. Uh and also sometimes because of the love of those country, um and for gratitude, picked up citizenships of those countries. Um I don't think that uh the Republic of Liberia or any republic um should be in 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 any way um able or or given the authority to then take away um the citizenship right or the citizenship access of those people uh who still love the land they were born in. So for me, and and I do believe uh beyond that, just beyond the uh the moral argument, um there are a lot of benefits that um that citizens um who were born in Liberia um can that now live in in foreign lands uh can bring back uh can bring a lot of development back to uh the Republic of Liberia. Uh so yes, I I do support dual citizenship and 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 on a lot of for a lot of reasons.
Thank you. And then let's talk about the the bill or or the legislation or the proposal, you know, so many way to pull it. What kind of dual citizenship proposal do you want? Do you want a clean dual citizenship proposal or one with manual restriction as the current one is?
Well, um I I I think the the current one um that is up for uh for referendum, I I think it was a cap out. I think um this whole idea of doing peace meals, um um I don't think is right. Uh I mean, I understand some of the arguments, don't get me wrong, because I I I'm a teacher. So I tend to listen to folks and listen to their arguments uh before uh 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 coming up with an analysis. And some of the arguments on the ground um that led to this to this restricted uh 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 bill that is now being discussed and it's out there for referendum uh come December. Um I think there's a lot of fear um that was that was built into the mind of people who are arguing um uh uh against um the uh the dual citizenship bill. But I am for a clean um dual citizenship bill um that have um very little, if any. Um cuz I can see any restriction uh for citizens who were born in Liberia. You see, there are two things we mistake here. Quite often when we have the conversation, people talk about, well, you know, dual citizenship uh uh naturalization. Well, we even though there are folks who might be able to naturalize on a Liberian law and become dual citizen because they were born in different countries. What we are talking about are Liberians who were born in Liberia and picked up citizenship elsewhere. So we are no longer naturalizing in Liberia. We're just asking that the 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 citizenship that was bestowed upon us at birth by um our creator um not be stripped from us. And all of the responsibilities and 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 rights uh that 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 followed that should not be limited. So for me, I I am for a clean dual citizenship. For Liberians who were born in Liberia. At the beginning of this show, I told you I was born in Liberia or flourished in the US. So all of those Liberians, all of those people who now who citizenship in other countries, whether you were born in Liberia and flourished in the Africa coast, or was born in Liberia and flourished in the UK or in Europe or in Asia or in Americas, I don't think that the dual citizenship bill should have a restriction on those people.
And you know, the Liberian citizenship is something that sometimes, you know, uh gets uh heated in terms of the debate. There are some category of Liberian citizen, uh those who are born onto a Liberian mother and a foreign father. My understanding of the law, the way it is, if, for example, a Liberian mother gives birth to a Liberian child born onto a foreign father, that child is not a Liberian when they fail to declare their citizenship upon reaching the age of maturity. In the case of the father, once that child is born onto a Liberian father, they don't necessarily have to do that. So this is the unfairness of the law that many people are talking about, for which they are saying a proposal uh as the one we have would be able to solve that problem and bring about fairness. Where do you stand on that argument?
Well, yeah, so here's the thing, um people tend to argue this thing as if those two things are mutually exclusive. Right? We we can have a dual citizenship um law that addresses the points that I'm making and also addresses this this century uh 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 this century old uh uh wrong that has been done to 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 Liberian women. Our citizenship laws is so sexist when it comes to that, right? What is what is what is the rationale? I I you know, what is the rationale that somebody can give during this day and age that accounts for the fact that you allow me, a man, to be able to pass down citizenship to my offspring? But my daughter or my sisters or my mother could not pass that down to me or to their children. Right? So I I so usually people tend to compartmentalize issues and put us in 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 cocoons, in different in different rooms, and try to make it as if to say um these two rooms are mutually exclusive. We can have a citizenship law, dual citizenship law, that addresses first and foremost the issue about about who passes down citizenship by birth. And and also in the same process, fix the issue with the 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 vast and gross limitations that has been placed on Liberians who find themselves in foreign lands.
All right, I will read an article for you, uh just a portion of it. The West African state of Liberia is one of the twenty-seven countries in the war that has legislation denying women the right to pass on their nationality to their children in the same way as men. This means children born to non-Liberian fathers and Liberian mothers outside of Liberia can be stateless if the father does not manage to pass on his nationality. The identification of a child's parent through official birth registration can be important to the parent's ability to pass on nationality. In a region where very low level of birth registration in West Africa and Central Africa, only fourteen percent of births are estimated to be registered. Now, the point they're making here is that the Liberian mother cannot pass her nationality, her Liberian nationality to her born child if that child is born onto a foreign father. I'm bringing this point in because the current proposal that we have, that is to be voted upon in a referendum, this scale of this, is this not enough for you to support the current bill as it is?
Well, here's the thing, um again, the issue, I don't mean, look, it is so sad uh sadly that in this day and age, we stay discussing, um we we stay talking about constitution constitutional uh laws or 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 restrictions that are based on sex, right? We 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 should be past that. So so this is, let us recognize that this is a gross injustice that has been done for centuries, right? Uh perpetrated against women all around the world, but specifically for now, Liberian women. So I do support that, but I've refused to accept that uh people think that we we uh you know, we have to batter. We have to trade and 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 the only capital that we have to trade is uh the rights of our women. I think that's disrespectful to women all over the world and to Liberian women in in particular. For anybody to stand and say, well, we give, we are giving women the right. And so because of that, now we have to take something away from other people. I said to say, when we give women, so 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 let's think about this, right? Let's let's put this out there. So let me give you a scenario.
Okay.
So I am a Liberian woman, okay?
Okay.
And and I now live in 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 Guinea. Or I am a Liber- I'm a Liberian woman who now lives in the diaspora. And you give me the right, you are now giving me the right through this referendum. I assume it passes as the way it is.
Right.
You're not giving me the right through this re- uh referendum to be able to pass down my citizenship to my offspring.
Yeah.
Yet, yet, in the same referendum that is giving me freedom, you are limiting to what extent I, as this woman now, can participate in my country. So you're giving me freedom, yet tying me back. So think about that woman. Think about, think about that in your mind, for for example, uh your sister or my sister who now will have to be faced with a celebration and a sorrow. You're celebrating a yes, my, I can pass citizenship to my children, but oh, by the way, there are limitations still on me. I think that's wrong.
There 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 are words around uh the 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 limitation though, uh Mister Goya. Don't you think that is fair? I mean, if that passes and becomes law, Liberia will not be the only country with limitation on uh dual citizenship, isn't it?
Yeah, but to what extent? Look, here is, here, a- a- anything that is not done properly at first is not done at all. We have been, we have been dealing with this sexist and somewhat racist constitution for a very long time. This is the one chance that we have. And I refuse to believe that our politicians and our leaders in Liberia are of the mindset that we can only do one thing at a time. I think we are very capable, and I believe the Liberian populace and 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 the electorists are very capable of being able to discuss complex issues at the same time, multiple complex issues. And so my point I'm making here to you is I am not one of those who believe in this uh peace meal stuff. Let's do a bit by bit by bit by bit, when in fact, we just, we have an option right now, and we have an opportunity to fix all of these things. So so you tell me, if if since our independence in eighteen forty-seven, right?
Yeah.
If 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 we have always had this 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 constitution that has that has never allowed citizenship to be passed down through birth by women. And then we've come down to the seventies where we had the Liberian uh 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 Nationality Act that then uh uh kinda uh forbade uh the uh the dual citizenship. So we've been dealing with 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 this to some extent for at least forty years, um or for decades and and over a century. This is the one time we've had a chance to fix this. So why not fix everything? I I I I I've talked to quite a few politicians back home, and I've always told people, I refuse to accept that that you are coming to us and say, let's trade. And 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 your your trump card that you have in your hand, the currency that you have to trade with is the right of Liberian women. That is disrespectful to Liberian women. We can give them the rights that they've deserved ever since and even beg for their ap- for apologize to them and beg for their mercy. But in the same process, make sure that we don't limit them and 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 then that they have to go around stuff, right? We can do all of these things in one fair suit.
Another counterargument uh others are making on the issue of the restriction uh is that people who are having so much quan with these manual restriction, they call them, are people with political interest and maybe it's the only thing they see in the country they claim to love. If somebody say you can be a minister proper, a deputy minister, head of an autonomous agency, there are a lot of things you can do, you can vote. Uh you can be assistant minister, it doesn't, you know, forbid that. And you can be a business person, you know, you can start a business, you can own land. There are a lot of other rights that come with the proposal that Liberians, you know, uh should be able to welcome and not worrying about other restrictions that are minor. What do you say to that?
Well, if we're still talking about Liberians who were born, natural born Liberians, if we're still talking about it.
Right.
Because, you know, if we're talking about, because again, quite too often, people tend to 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 confuse the two things.
Right.
Right? They confuse naturalized um Liberians with um natural born Liberians. Because in in these United States that we find ourselves,
Right.
um naturalized Americans have restrictions on on ju- positions that they can that they can vie for. So for me, uh as an example, as a naturalized American, um I can contest city council races, right? But I cannot be president of the United States because I was not natural born. If I were a natural born American, would I have dual citizenship or not? I would not be limited from uh uh vying for that position. And that's what people tend to confuse um quite often. And I think people who know better tend to confuse people uh purposefully. So let me get back to the point, cuz I'm talking about natural born Liberians. So if you are telling me to be happy, um if the argument is that I should be happy that, but but the mere fact that you're restoring back upon me my citizenship that was given to me uh at birth. And therefore, I should be happy with so many limitations, I should be happy for not being capable of being minister proper. But oh, by the way, um I can be a businessman. So let me ask the question, because again, I'm a math teacher and I tend usually to extend the knowledge in my classroom by pushing back with questions that kinda begs a little bit more discussion.
Okay.
Would my tax rates as an Ameri- as a as a Liberian uh 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 citizen, who has limitation, I cannot be minister proper? Would I still have to pay the same proper amount of taxes, the same tax rate as everybody else in Liberia? If the or if the if the if the if the answer is yes, if you're telling me, well, the constitution does not give me equal respons- uh equal rights, but it still gives me equal responsibility, then I tell you, there is a problem with your calculation and your calculus. You cannot expect me to have limited rights, yet you still expect for me to to have to have full responsibility. So you can't have it both ways. And that is the that is the inequity that I'm talking about. You cannot, you cannot tell me, well, you can be a businessman and pay higher tax rates to support the government, to support these people who are ministers. But oh, by the way, you cannot be a minister.
Mister Goya, uh another argument, uh others who support the dual citizenship proposal, it is with the restriction, is the issue of national security implication. So let's say Mister Goya is an American citizen as well as a Liberian and having dual citizenship thereabout. They are saying you can't be the defense minister because you hold allegiance to two countries. So America with the bigger pocket can say, look, my man, you're part of us, you know, screw Liberia over, uh we can fix it later. You might be obliged to do so. Is that not a reasonable argument?
That is, that is laughable. Uh because because Liberia, Liberia as it is right now.
Right.
America can still tell the people who are owner Liberians to still screw over Liberia. As a matter of fact, there are there, we we still have arguments, right, about who is assassinated at Taba.
Right.
Right? So 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 we, look, let's let's not play, let's not kid ourselves, right? Let's not kid ourselves and pretend if if it is possible for somebody to be corrupted
Right.
to 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 sabotage their government.
Right.
I don't think it has anything to do with which country you owe allegiance to. There are plenty of people doing that already in Liberia that have never left the shores of Liberia, right? We have wars, we have so many factions in Liberia of people uh uh infringing upon the 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 fundamental constitutional rights of other Liberians and abridging the the Liberian constitution, right? And 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 picking up arms against their country. Indigenous born Liberians who had never left Liberia, they didn't need an American Liberian to 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 do that. And so that argument, I think, I think flies in the face of 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 our history. And and it presumes that there are nobody on this earth that is patriotic enough so that patriotism, patriotism in their own definition is limited to have you been out of the country and do you have family out of the country? And if you check those two boxes, then you are no longer a patriot. And I'll tell you, there are so many people who live in the diaspora. There are more patriotic than a lot of people who have never left the shores of Liberia.
Let me bring the other component in. That is the accountability component of it. Some people fear that if you don't have these kind of restrictions, and so this year, God forbid, can take money belonging to the government because maybe he holds a citizenship of another country, let's say, for example, in America, he's on a plane and he's gone. Now he's in another country that is his. You can't get him because he's protected by that country. How do you get him prosecuted for such crime?
Well, first thing is, I hate for, I I I will, it is a stronger word. I dislike when 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 people uh uh tend to argue that uh uh moral bankruptcy uh somehow um is is um has a direct correlation to um multiple citizenship. So let me give you one one question. Again, I'm a teacher, so I like to push, I like to push the envelope a lot. Um Chastilla, when he was accused of embezzling money from uh the Republic of Liberia at the time by the Dour region.
Yeah.
Was he an American? Was he an American at the time? No. Were we able to gain back to Liberia? No. So if you even could not do it, you weren't capable of doing it for for somebody who was not a dual citizen. Why are you trying to put to to portray that to blanketly put that on Liberians? I know the biggest question, the biggest issue is the Ellen Cochran stuff, but this has happened before Ellen Cochran. There are so many other cases of that. As a matter of fact, there are cases where, I know of, uh somebody committed crime in Liberia, who was a Liberian, left and came to the United States, right? Under investigation, actually, they were given parole, probation, right? Uh they they were on on bail rather. They 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 fled the country, came to the United States, went back after 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 one regime, and they were no longer charged for murder, right? So look at, for example, what happened recently, um again, with the same lady who returned quite recently.
Right.
On a indictment by the administration, returns to Liberia.
Right.
They're celebrated by the government in power. And then when there were a lot of outcries, the solicitor general says, oh, no, by the way, uh there are gonna be some charges. And then thereafter, those charges got dropped again.
Yeah.
So this person returned to the country. And so if the argument is that we do not, that the country will lack the ability to prosecute, I'm telling you, the person is, you got a case right now in your country. So this is not about the dual citizenship as much as it is the lack of will of the governments that be to prosecute those cases. One of the biggest thing is, you can be asking foreign governments to extradite, to deport your citizens for you to prosecute them on charges of of corruption when you in fact are more corrupt. That is the problem we got.
All right.
That is the problem we got. We we show up to these to these international uh uh houses, asking for our citizens or asking for them to send their citizens back to us to prosecute them on charges of corruptions when we are in fact more corrupt. And so that's why people tend to laugh at us. So let's not get this wrong. Let's not get this, let's not get this twisted. If if Liberians really, if the governments really want to be able to prosecute people regardless of your citizenship, that have violated the laws of Liberia, they still have the ability. They just have to have the appetite to do it. And I think that is lacking.
Another component uh you raise, uh let let me bring it up, and then we will go to the inalienability of the law, and that is the racial component. You said earlier that the constitution of Liberia, as it is when it comes to nationality, is racist. Do you believe that and why do you believe that? And does it mean that you would rather have a dual citizenship bill that will include every ballot irrespective of color?
So so here is, here is, here is one thing, and and let's lay down the back, the background, because sometimes quite too often um people were uh were mistaken, um the point you're trying to make because they didn't listen to the background. So let me put this on the table. I understand why why the founders um of 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 our great republic saw a need to put in there in the constitution um a limitation on citizenship
Okay.
that says only people of negro descent can be citizens of the Republic of Liberia. I understand that because um the the a lot of the founders uh returned from America and and other places where they had been held in slavery um by white people. They just put it out there. And so when they were, when they had this opportunity to go back home to Africa and chart a new course and a new destination and a new destiny for themselves and their children, they saw in it a need to ensure that for their own protection that slave owners and slave masters don't again follow them into Africa and enslave them. They were trying to avoid what was happening in South Africa. They didn't want apartheid in Liberia. So I completely understand that. And had I been uh alive those days, yes, I would have been in the street and yelling and marching for that. Okay, now, let's take that to today. It is a fact that our constitution still, as of today, as we speak, still says that citizenship can only be granted to people of negro descent. By definition, that is racist. Now, I'm not saying that is, that 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 that, you know, making a judgment as that being bad or good. I'm just saying, by definition, that is racist. Now, would I want um uh uh citizenship to be open up to um to white people? Well, so let me put this up here, all people that are not of negro descent. You see, people like to argue this thing, you know, they wanna, they wanna eat their cake and have it too. You you have people in Liberia who, because they are non-Liberians, violate, crossly violate a lot of Liberian laws that we we don't prosecute. Sometimes they leave and as an example, go back to Lebanon, because I have a lot of Lebanese in Liberia.
Right.
That go back to Lebanon. And we have no authority, sometimes no app, no appetite to go after them. There have been cases of rape in Liberia where 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 these people, like Lebanese, have been allowed to leave the country, right? So my, what I'm saying here is, and these people own, I I I'm and I'm gonna be very, very liberal here, they own over fifty percent of our economy.
All right, we gotta move on here, uh Mister uh Goya. My question is, will you? And don't make it too long, let go, so we can get to the juicer part of this interview. Uh will you support a dual citizenship that is open to all people of color?
Right, so again, not dual citizenship to all people, but citizenship to all people.
Okay.
Dual citizenship to like to natural born Liberians, but naturalization to all other people because naturalization come with limitations.
Okay.
Support those limitations.
All right, thank you. Uh folks in server space, you are watching. Alright, thank you. Uh folks in server space, you are watching Focus on Liberia. And this is our program, The Hour of Politics with me, Asolensie, your host. I have with me Mister Sisik Goya. He is a public servant. He is a proud public school teacher. He is an emerging politician, that is my description of him. And we are discussing dual citizenship. And now we are about to move to the Liberian government. He has been paying attention quite clearly. Liberia is his own country. And he got some concern, he got some disagreement. He sees some contradiction and we are about to go into it. But the segment we are just ending is the dual citizenship. He supports dual citizenship for Liberians. He believes whoever was born a Liberian should be a Liberian. There should be no law providing any limitation thereof. And that's why he believes. Alright, let's come to the Wea government. A government that was elected overwhelmingly by the Liberian people. We call the worst hope, change, and many other good words. And some people were like, this is the deal. My first question to you is, what is your overall assessment as a Liberian who is concerned and has been paying attention? What is your overall assessment of the CDC government performance so far?
Uh 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 on an average, and that would be adding up all of the data and dividing by the number of data points, is I'm disappointed.
Okay.
Um it is a disappointment uh because like you rightfully said, this government um has been one of the government that has, that has come into office with an overwhelming mandate of the Liberian electorate. There were, there were people who, who believed in the message and the messenger as President Wea and the CDC. That yet, yes, indeed, this was gonna be a group uh uh of, 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 of people that were indeed gonna bring change, positive change, and give hope. Uh but unfortunately, like I said, uh on average, it, it's been a disappointment for me. Because I've seen change, yeah, as a mathematician, change is slow, right, uh right, the rate of change, right, is slow, rise of a run. Un- unfortunately, we've seen a negative slope, we've seen a negative change. Right? When things have gone backwards uh instead of going forward. So, but I don't think that was the change that Liberian people voted for. And so to answer your question, on average, I'm disappointed.
Alright, so you are disappointed. Uh let's go into the integrity of your disappointment. Let's start with governance. Is your beloved country in good hands in your opinion?
Well, um, no, because I cannot be disappointed and still say, yes, it's in good hands, right? Uh so no. Um now, the follow up question that I will ask is, um is it still possible for this government to turn things around? And the answer is yes. And in order to do that, there has to be some structural and moral changes.
Okay.
So, 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 so that would be a short, a short answer for you.
And, and can you share with me uh a couple of those structural and moral changes Sisik Goya would love to see so that his country will start to becoming that beautiful country on National Hill?
So, rule of law.
Okay.
Follow rule of law. Respect the law. Make sure that nobody is above the law or below the law. Because as it is right now in Liberia, if you're in government or if you make money, you are above the law. And if you don't make much money or you are very poor, you are below the law. And so the laws, the law get, gets applied in different ways. Right? The next thing is, this government came to power on the promise that the Liberian people would not be spectators in their own economy. Who, uh, somebody told me the other day, they're not even, they're not even being allowed, they're not even being allowed to, 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 to.
They're not in the stadium.
Right? So, 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 so they're not even be, they don't even know where the game is being played.
Wow.
Right? So, so this government should make sure that it's, it empowers its citizens by ensuring that they, they have, they, they, they have the ability to participate in their economy. The next thing is, this government came to power uh claiming that was gonna be transparent. As of now, the only one person I know of who has had his access declared that we can be able to judge and say, yes, he stole money or not based on where, where his worth is right now is, is, is Senator DeLao. Nobody else has declared their accent and made it public. The president declared his access, his, 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 uh, his assets and kept them secret. And, 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 and he's using lawyers and the Solicitor General and the CDC to argue that, well, it's there, people will find it, he won't make it public because of the security of his family. What security? If you cannot lead by example, then why do you wanna be a leader? So for me, those are some of the pieces, right? Because if you're not declaring assets and we are seeing mansions going up overnight, then people start to believe that you're corrupt. What are, what are factual or not? Had George Weah declared his assets, then the, the, the mansions that he put up, it would have been an easy argument. If people had said, well, the forty-nine uh or however many buildings you have in Jamaica resort, uh would have said, well, it's just own money because here is the bare assets. He declared them. This is how much money he had. But if you didn't declare them, then you create this situation where people start to say you took public funds, even if they are right or wrong, because you can argue that.
Mister, Mister Goya, those who support the president, I'm, I'm glad you brought the issue of asset declaration as one of the things on, on the rule of law and also from a transparency point of view also uh that the president needed to show leadership and set a good example on, you know, to lead on, like you said. Those who support the president are clear that the president did what is required by the law by declaring his asset. And if anybody wants to see it, they should go to the court. And then uh they will be able uh to see it. Uh uh isn't that what the law say? And, and, and is he not buying by the law here? I mean, I'm just asking your question.
I agree. I agree. But leadership requires a little bit more than that. If, if you take into account the country in which we live, how many of our citizens have the ability or the time to go to court against the president? And, and let me throw in the caveat. How sure are you that even when you go against the president that you will win? In a country where the ruling party decided that they like the decision that an associate justice of the Supreme Court rendered while a justice and they remove him forcibly from the Supreme Court? Taking that into account, how many people still believe that they can even beat the Liberian government in the, in a case? And, and should you win? Would the government even abide by the ruling of the Supreme Court? Because we have a case, Isaac Jackson, the Liberian Permanent Representative to uh to, 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 to the IMO.
Yeah.
Because his position is a tinny position. And because this government did not like him, went after him. They refused to pay him his salaries. They refused to renew his diplomatic passport, him and his family. When he went after them and he fought them in the Supreme Court. And the Supreme Court issued a ruling that they should return to the status ante. That they should go back to where they were before. As of this day, the Liberian government has refused to honor the ruling of the Supreme Court. So now you tell me, given all of those scenario where Cabinet Janet being forcibly removed from the Supreme Court uh and with, with judges being demoted because of decisions that they took that did not go along with what the government wanted. And when the government just absolutely disrespecting the Supreme Court in this ruling. How many people have the appetite to go to court for that? But let's not forget that. If you are a leader, you lead by example. You don't go hiding behind the laws and say, well, the law say I should do the minimum, so I'm gonna do the absolute minimum required by law.
Mister Goya, uh let me bring this up. Uh you are talking about whether or not uh the government should somebody else win an election, for example. You're not sure whether the, the, the decision by the Liberian people withstand. Delon, I don't think Delon uh has been a fan of this government. Uh Delon went into a political race, he won, the results are binding, Delon is sitting in the senate today. Other election that the CDC did not win, uh though individuals uh 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 occupying the position to which they were elected. And then we saw Charles Salif, we saw now uh Metong Weeks. And all, all these people went to court, charges been dropped against them. Don't you think this government is like, you know, going by the rule of law?
No, answer me. I, I did not say, I did not say that the uh, uh that the government would not respect uh election results. Uh I, I was not discussing election results. We were talking about the legal process and, 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 and legal rulings from the Supreme Court. Okay, so I wasn't talking about election results. I had not even touched on election results. I said, how many people in our country have the aptitude or the ability to go to court against the government? And I was laying out uh our frameworks and I was laying out examples of where this government has, has, has appropriated the laws and have refused to apply the law or the rulings of, of, of justices. So I wasn't talking about, about elections and election results. Uh because, you know, I, 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 I haven't seen any evidence that suggests that uh that they will corrupt an election. Um even though there were some of those um evidences when um in the race with Tilia, you're right. Um they had to go to a recount and they had to go to a rerun because there were, there were, there were, there were evidences of, 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 of undue intervention. So, so those, those evidences are there, but I, I have not yet spoken about, about those.
Alright, let, let us come to the issue of accountability, uh something you started with earlier, but let's go into the crumps of it. The CDC government, at some point, we listened to the president talking about uh speaking on this of your accountability and he said that if anybody in his government will carry on anything like corruption, that person will be prosecuted to the full extent of the law. We are reminder of the twenty-five million dollar noise. There was investigation after investigation. The last one came from the General Auditting Commission that indacted the government that shows so many inconsistency. Those who support the government said that hairs were going to roll had the report come out. The report came out just a year from the president that he's sending a report to the LACC. Whoa, the LACC were part of the PRT report. So why send a report to an institution that was part of an initial report that indactor you the very government? What difference they gonna do? Why can't you add on the one you have? But the president said he was sending to, to LACC. And in his words, he wanted two weeks and later on the reverse to one month. And that report probably has been buried at LACC. Maybe because we have a guy called Nambo Diki down there. But the point I'm making here is that what is stopping the president from adding on this report? It being, it being over one year now since the president made a promise. Does this suggest in any way that the president has something to hide here?
Well, I, without having all of the evidences, what I can say based on what I'm seeing is that the president lack the will, the will to, to, to enforce. And that goes back to my point I made earlier that in Liberia, um there are some people who live above the law and some people who live below the law. If you find yourself above the law, the law does not touch you. You can do anything and get away with it. And that is the case of the, the twenty-five million and the sixteen billion dollars and so many other cases that we can point to. Right? If you live below the law, then the law suffocates you. It presses down on you. And so you strive to see sometimes where people who are falling out of favor with the government gets indicted, gets dragged into court, gets dragged in the public, right? And, and to, to kinda make a mockery of them. And, 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 and that's how the government flexes his muscles.
Right.
And I think that is absolutely wrong. There should not be a case where some people are below the law and other people are above the law. And the only reason why that happens, again, here is the point. How can the president in, 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 in his clear conscience go after somebody to prosecute them for corruption when he did not even, even make sure, cause he, he said it in passing that people should declare their accent. He has appointed people, he has appointed in his entire cabinet, his entire government, and none of them have declared their assets. So people understand that he's not gonna do anything because if he can't even do the least, which is when you're coming into government, declare your assets. They even made fun. They, 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 they joke about Dylan when, when Dallas Dylan say he had three dollars and fifty cents in his bank account and they joked about it. Why would that be something to joke about when a man has declared his assets and he's telling how much money you got? Only reason they joked about it was because they hadn't understood what the moral impetus is to be able to do stuff like that. And so the president cannot, cannot go after anybody to prosecute anybody when he has created the enabling conditions for people to feel like they can violate the laws and get away with it. If I didn't declare my asset to you instantly, how are you gonna know what in my house I built in, in Wazera uh came from public funds or not? I didn't tell you how much money I own when I came into government.
Hey, Sisay, uh to my knowledge, like the president, he sent an example, maybe it's a bad one. Uh maybe it's in keeping with the law. That is, he declared his asset. He did not make it public, but let us share with our listeners here that the president did declare his asset in two thousand and five and make it public. In two thousand and eleven, when he contested along with uh, what's his name, uh Winston Tottenham, he did declare his asset and again make it public. Not until two thousand and seventeen uh and then he got elected uh uh in, in two thousand and seventeen and then twenty eighteen now. Uh he took over. He has refused to declare his asset and like you said earlier, quite clearly, correctly, he has a family to protect. Mister Wea, you have family in two thousand and five. You have family in two thousand and eleven. Or it's said now you realizing that you have a family to protect. I will say to anybody, the president is hiding something. But the point I'm making is, yes, there are some officials of government from our research that they declared that they are assets. But like their president, did not make it public. And say you wanna see it, go to court. So some of them have, and that is the issue of transparency. Public officials should not have, hide rather, what they have so that the citizens will know that they have no intentions of taking any money uh that is not uh the ask. Let us come to this. We're talking about rule of law earlier. Freedoms and rights in Liberia. From your assessment, how we doing? I'm talking about press, you know, or speech, you know? How, how we doing? Is the government, this government pass the uh Adulai, Kantama, uh uh I think freedom, I de called it, uh press freedom, I de called it, something like that. Uh is the government a contradiction here when you look at its behavior when it comes to press, press freedom?
I, I, I think, I think this government needs to do way more, way more to ensure um the freedom of the press and, and the freedom of the people to disagree and, and express their disagreement um through all of the channels that are guaranteed to them um in our constitution.
Okay.
One of the, one of the men, and I'm gonna go out here and I know he probably will come on Facebook and he insults me later, I'm fine. I'm, I'm good with that. I got thick skin. I'm a teacher. You know, what worse can you do to me than what teenagers can do to me, right? So I'm okay with that. But one person that's making the job of uh of the president when it comes to, of, of the government, when it comes to the press and the freedom of, of, of people to express um and disagree with their government is, is Eugene Fargo. And I think until and unless the president can fire him, they're gonna have issues. So take for example, you know, I'm not gonna go way back, right? We're talking about uh uh you talking about investigations that come and go. Uh Zunu Miller. The late Zunu Miller, the liberal journalist who there was information out there that was killed. Um, 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 after um he had a little bit of a, uh, uh, I think he was beat. Uh, beaten by um, um, the president's uh security guards. Uh, and the president had assured the press and the liberal people that are going to be some investigations. Haven't heard anything from there yet, right? Um, so you come, you, and then you come now and talk to about the uh, let's just talk about the most recent thing, right? Talk about the uh, the state of emergency. And they talk about press, uh, 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 organizations and media houses that will be allowed out during the state of emergency. And then Eugene Fargo comes out later and says, well, he's not gonna honor the passes of the, of the press union of Liberia. He was gonna be giving out press passes to media houses that he felt uh, uh, were not. Would, that were not critical of the government. And then you come to a recent announcement about it, so listen to general, Serenus uh, 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 Cephus. Right? Uh, uh, talking about, about just being violent towards the press and abrogating the rights of the press. So, so the government, I think the president has to have a thick enough skin to let his people know. That when, when your citizens are expressing themselves, that's how you know how well you're doing. That's a, that should be a barometer to measure how well you're doing and what do you need to do more. But if people are not speaking in your society, then you as a leader don't know how to gauge. What are you doing a good enough job or what are you doing a very horrible job? So, so muscling the press does not help the president, it does not help the uh, the, the government. So I, to, to that point, the government needs to do way more. And I said it can start somewhere, just fire that dude that says, uh, the, uh, administrator that insults people. That gets on, 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 on Facebook and just hurt our insults. This is supposed to be somebody who represents Africa's oldest republic. Africa's oldest republic and he gets on Facebook and insults people. And gets away with it and threatens the press and gets away with it. Who is he protecting or who is telling him that it's okay to do that? Those should be the questions we'll be asking.
Thank you again folks in South Space, you are watching Focus on Liberia. This is our program, the Hour of Politics with me, Anthony Sia, your host. Our guest is Mister Sisay Goya, he is an emerging politician, he's a public school teacher. And he is also a proud public seven, a Liberian. Who is paying attention, who is worrying about his country, he thinks his country is not in good hands. He could not be disappointed from what he sees. Uh, our phone lines are open, you can call, so yeah, you can interact with my guest. If you have some questions for him, he would be more than willing to answer them. Uh, very soon I will be reading some comment also, but eh, the phone lines are open, you can call in, I will take your call. And we will continue the conversation. Let's talk about political engagement with political actors in Liberia. One thing that comes to mind is, you know, protest also because we're talking about rights, you know, and freedoms. Uh, of the people and, and we had protests and I really want you to go into this, I know you've been paying attention. In Liberia, the June seven protest and all other protests, we saw negotiation. Protest organizers are negotiating with the government to decide a date, to decide a place. And we just witnessed one of the, you know. Popular protests in America, I didn't see organizers negotiating with city council, city mayors, governors. And, and the presidents, what, where they should go protest, when they should go protest, I didn't see that. Is democracy a player in Liberia here when it comes to, you know, people's right to assemble peacefully as guaranteed on the constitution?
So, um, I too was disappointed when I saw that thing because, um, most protests by definition are organic. Right? It should be organic, right? And, and there have been, you know, in, in history, uh, sometimes where protests have been played. But that was a sad, uh, a sad, sad movie to watch on Liberia. When I saw their negotiation and, and the American embassy had to get involved. Because they were, they were looking at um, the, uh, the security of the state, um, and all of that, right? It was, it was, it was, it was an interesting movie to watch, um, play out slowly in Liberia. But look, I like to, uh, and there were people, people on, on, uh, that were for their negotiation. And, and I like to, to use the analogy that, um, if you buy a, an iPhone, um, the newest model. And you, you don't know how to use it, but for how to accept to take pictures. And, and post on Facebook and, and make phone calls and send text messages. Then, then you have the tool at your hands, you just don't know how much power that phone is in your hand. I always talk to people who, for example, will come to me and say, Mr. Goya, I bought a computer, can you come and help me set it up? And you go and see that this person has bought a, a two thousand dollars computer that has a dual core processor. Right? And then I asked him, so what are you gonna be using this for? Are you gonna be doing some math calculations and stuff? No, it's gonna be used for, um, you know, to get on the internet. Well, you don't need a dual core processor, you got way too much strength that you don't know how to use. And so what I'm trying to get to is that our education system ought to be blamed. For some of these sad things we see happening because if people know their rights, if people know their responsibilities. Right? Then we would not be in this, we would not be actors in this, in these comical movies. Where we sit and have these negotiations and have these arguments, sometimes they are just laughable. But because our educational system, especially civic education. It, it, it's, it's, it's somewhat non-existent or is limited to a few. That is the reason is really difficult for our people to know the power that they hold in their hand with their iPhone. Or the power of a dual core processor on a computer, they're just using it to send text messages. And so they only understand a minimum, a minimum, uh, 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 right that they have as citizens. And, and, and so for me, I think one of the ways that we can empower our people. To, 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 to know what their responsibilities are and what their rights are. And how to ensure that they're not making a mockery of Africa's oldest democracy. Is to teach them in the schools, what their roles are and what their responsibilities and, and rights are.
Alright, we have another component of this interview. Uh, something that you are about to. Uh, engage in that is a political contest. And, but before we go into that, let us conclude on this uh, Liberian government. Uh, I have few questions and diffuse question I need the shortest answers possible. And then we can get into our Minnesota politics a, a little bit. So earlier, you raised concern about corruption. About this government and my question here is. Do you not want to doubt that corruption is taking place? In this government, will you not doubt that in any way?
Well, the government has not given me a reason. Uh, uh, out of empirical or anecdotal, um, to believe that corruption is non-existent. You see, because when people get up in the morning and they see mansions popping up all around them. But they're not being paid for months, then they tend to question where that money is coming from. You see, Anthony, you know me from Minnesota and if you know that I live in a one bedroom apartment. And then, and then I get a job in Liberia and in two weeks' time, I'm buying a house in the suburb in Minnesota. You start to ask questions, where did Mr. Goya get the money? And if Mr. Goya did not declare his assets to tell you in the bank, I have a hundred thousand dollars. Then the only logical assumption is that Mr. Goya is taking public funds to enrich himself. But if I told you that I have three hundred thousand dollars in my bank account and I moved to Liberia. And I, and I build a house in Liberia that is seventy five thousand dollars. You would be, you would be very remiss to question that that money came from my pocket, you go, well, they may have three hundred thousand dollars. Yeah, he can buy, he can build a house for seventy five thousand dollars. And so in a short way, the government has not given me any evidence, anecdotal or empirical. To believe that there is not massive corruption or looting of public resources going.
Thank you, let's talk about turning it around. You said that there is a possibility, you know, paraphrasing your words here. That the government can turn it around, it's something that you don't doubt, maybe you're looking at time, maybe you're looking at if they want to. My question is, do you think this government wants to? And does the government seems to have that ability, that desire to turn it around?
Well, I don't know if the government wants to because they haven't shown me any evidence that they have the appetite for it. But, um, the ability is there, uh, because this is a coalition government, right? This is a coalition of political parties and I fail to believe that there were no Liberians. And if I even buy into their, to their argument that because the CDC won an election, so the CDC should, should, should rule. If I buy that argument, I still refuse to accept that within the collaborating political parties that form the CDC. That they don't have people of will and moral character that they can appoint into positions. That will make, that will bring the hope and the change that the people voted for. There are a lot of, there, there are a lot of the partisans out there that can make that happen. But the current government of the day have to have the appetite to bring in those people. I know a lot of Liberians that are seditions that are really well qualified. And have the moral fortitude to stand up and do the work of the Liberian people. Now, is there an appetite to bring them in? I don't think so.
Well, I have to push you on this one again, you just made a clean statement here that the ability is there. And you incidentally that this is a collaboration, this is the Coalition for Democratic Change. A conglomeration of political parties making that. So there's no way somebody can tell you, Goya, that there are not qualified individuals in there. And you went further by saying there are even seditions who are not in the government who have the moral fortitude to do so. What stopped the CDC from putting them in the government in the first place? That's my first question. And my second question is, even if the CDC government does, why wouldn't you believe that? They will follow the same music that their friends who are in government are dancing?
Well, so let me answer the second question first. In order for people to come in and, and do work, you see, so I'm holding a water in my hand, I'm, I'm, I'm a math teacher, I'm also an engineer. Um, there is this basic law that talks about the property of liquids. That said liquids take the shape of the containers. So this container, however way, if I change it, the liquid I put in it would take the form. So the liquid being the people you bring into government and the container being the leadership. And the moral, the morality that the leadership espouses. So if the president can change the container. Then, and only then, would the liquid change its form. So we go back to declaring assets, the president declares this, he said, go to court. Nobody is gonna come out and declare they're making public because that's going against what the president did. So everybody can't take the same shape of that container. You understand that? And so if the, if the government of the day can change, if the president can change the way he governs. And the, 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 the culture of governance, then and only then can he bring in other people that will do the job. Look, I, I'm gonna go back real quick to something real fast. When they were asking to bring in the six thousand or however many Nigerian teachers to Liberia. I made it a point and said, I don't care if you brought teachers from the United States to go to Liberia. You will still have very minimum, if any, gains because we first need to set up the structure of education. You first have to start looking at curriculum and, and, and teacher development and teacher accountability and school accountability. If you don't put those things in play, whoever you bring and put in that place will take the ship of that container. And so, so that answers that question. Now, the first question as to why some of these people are not in government. Um, there's been rumors, I have never been in, 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 in one of those rooms where the CDC decides, you know, I've never been invited to any of that thing. So I don't know, but I can only, only assume that petty politics and petty jealousy. And, and sometimes, uh, inferiority complex, where certain people sit in a room. And they feel like the only way they can shine is, uh, by dimming the lights of other people. So if you have the only light on your street in Monrovia or in Liberia, that's how people know you're rich. If everybody come and sit by your walls, by your fence to sell the low pepper color. Cause you're the only person with a light, that's how people recognize you're rich. If everybody else got electricity, nobody cares whether you're rich. And so that is the mentality and the mindset I kept a lot of geniuses that the CDC has from being put into government.
Alright, thank you, thank you and uh, let me throw the last one in. But you said, if they, uh, continue, using your example. You know, you, you, you are an engineer. If they continue that the water in is contaminated, whatever quantity of water you pour there. What are you changing? The water in there, you pour another water, it has moist and that container is contaminated. You are contaminating the other water you're putting in there and you are not making, uh, that change. So that, that brings us to uh, Minnesota. A state that you reside in, I reside in. And we see here that you are a candidate for a city council position. Why are you making this decision?
Well, um, I'm making a decision because of community. I'm, I'm making a decision because, um, of what I see, uh, day to day as I interact. Uh, with America's pressure to do, um, the students. Uh, I'm making a decision because I, I believe that I, uh, am uniquely, um, qualified. Uh, with the lived experience and, and the education and, and, and the, and the, and the fortitude and the strength. Um, to make some of the changes, uh, that are, that are needed in, in the city of Brooklyn. And, and so that is the reason I'm running, um, because I believe that, um, I, I can be a, a conduit. Uh, uh, through, through which, um, um, people who have, who have no voice, um, uh, can, can be heard. And, and the people who have been, uh, invisible, um, to the city, uh, can be seen.
So any candidate, politically speaking, must have an agenda. And now that we are in the extraordinary times where the black man's story is in the news. Are you shaping your agenda in that respect or your agenda was already crafted in that respect?
So when you run a genuine, uh, campaign, when you actually believe in community and you, and you're running for a change in your community. Um, you, you almost become kind of prophetic, right? So, um, I, I, I deliver my graduation speech to my students, um, um, um. It was played, uh, last week. But I recorded my speech, um, about two weeks before the incident, uh, the, the murder of, uh, of George Floyd. And I spoke about issues back then that still are relevant today because let, let's not get, let's not get this twisted. Um, George Floyd is not a singular, uh, action, it's not a singular occurrence. This is the stuff that has been happening over and over and over for centuries. And so, no, I am not changing my campaign, um, to account for what happened to George Floyd. As a matter of fact, what happens to George Floyd amplifies the message that we've been preaching. Because for far too long, and I said, I've told people this before, um, and I would lay the foundation down. So as a mathematician, uh, and our students of math will learn that, uh, when you add zero to anything. That, that, that thing does not change. When you take away zero from something, that thing does not change. Systemic racism in America has allowed or have created. Uh, the situation where we, it almost seems that we have an operation of addition and subtraction where, uh, black people. Uh, are most of them seen as a zero. And so people take, uh, them and their lives for granted or our lives for granted. And so that was the reason when that cap was nearly on the neck of George Floyd, he smiled. He smiled because in his mindset, he believed he was subtracting zero from this life, that nothing was gonna happen to him.
Right.
And we have to stop that. We have to stop the situation where we live in a country where some people are invisible. And so, when, when we talk about community empowerment, when we talk about people having access to their government, to their city council. When we talk about city council people being accountable to their people, that's community empowerment. When you let people know that they, they are the, uh, the city hall. It is the people's hall. So, you take away the mistake because so many people drive by city hall and they are afraid to go into city hall. Because it has their, it has their, it has their power. But when you, when you teach people to understand that they hold the deeds. And the keys to those halls. And you empower them and you bring them into the fold so that they are voting. And you bring them to the table so that decisions that are made at city hall are made because the people say so. Then, you empower your community. Then you start to make changes. So, what I've told everybody all along. Is when I am elected as a city council member. I will always say, dust set the people. Because every decision that I take. I will make sure that it is a decision that comes from a consistent and persistent and deliberate. Interaction with all people in our city. What are their renters? What are their homeowners? What are their homeless? What are they, they, they are black, white, Asian, Latina? Uh, what are they, what, 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 uh, it doesn't matter. What are they make more money or less money? It, it should not matter. But quite too often, you find certain decisions being made by people who have, on behalf of, they have not.
Mister Goya, you are running to be a city councilman. What is the work? What is the role? What are the responsibilities of a city council man or woman?
So, uh, the city council is kinda, to some extent, almost like uh the legislators in the city. So, kinda like, you know, um, it's kinda trying to simplify it a little bit more.
Right, right.
Doesn't do much justice. But yeah, that is, that is what uh technically it is, right? So, um, your ordinances in your city, for example, you know, uh noise ordinances.
Right.
Um, uh, who can park on the street at what time of the nights and, and taxation sometimes, you know. Um, there's a lot of things. So, pretty much, um, you are almost like the legislators um for city government. And so, so, so to go back, you know, just to touch on that, the issue of George Floyd, for example, one of the things that I've, I've put out there. Um, I, I am a union person, so I wanna put that out there. I belong to the teachers' union. As a matter of fact, I am the union representative for Education Minnesota for my building. But having said that, I have told everybody that, that, that are willing to listen to me, that the police union in my city of Brooklyn Center. Needs to have a harder look at itself and the city council needs to have a harder look at the police contracts and the police union. Look, I as a city, as, 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 as a candidate for city council, have to live in the city to be a city council member. Why aren't we requiring residency of police officers for the cities that they police? See, I teach in Brooklyn Center High School. I live in Brooklyn Center. So, because of that. I interact with my students and their parents outside of school. Everywhere I go, I'm guaranteed to see some of my students and their parents. So, most times, even when I'm off the clock, I'm still having parent teachers conferences when I see these parents. In, in, uh, at Walmart or sometimes, you know, in, uh, 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 in the park. And so, because of that. I have to be extra careful. I keep my A game on every day because I know I will see these kids and their parents and I have to account for anything. Wrong that I do.
Is that something you will, you will be proposing when it comes to police reform in the city of Brooklyn Center? That police officers who will be assigned in your city, that you will be representing at the city council level. Should be resident of the city of Brooklyn Center?
Will be residents. Because when you are residents, you know the people that you're dealing with. And then what happens is, you know, I didn't end my analogy. There are parents who see me at Walmart go, Mister Goya, my daughter's really struggling with this math thing, what's going on? I said, oh, okay, you know why? We need to find some terms and let's deal with this or she needs to come, you know, after school or when can we meet? Right? We're having those conversations. So, they're not, I am not think, I am not assuming something about whom. And whom is not assuming something about me that maybe I don't just like their child. And so, when the police officer lives in the city and you go out and you're interacting with these people when you're off the job, you build relationships. So that those relationships tend to protect you, the police officer, and also protects the community that you serve. And so, that's one of the things I will be proposing. Another thing I'll be proposing is that when you, when you join the police force. When you, when you initially join the police force, you should be uh not, you should not just be automatically given a police vehicle. You should first start out with a bike. You should be biking through the city, walking through the city, interacting with the citizens, creating relationships. In education, that's all we do. We create relationships so that we be able to teach. In law enforcement, you should create relationship so that you keep. Yourself safe and you, you keep the city that you, that you police save. So, those are some of the things we're proposing. And yes, some people think it's radical, but I don't think it's radical. I think i- 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 it's, it's, it's a low brainer. Because relationships, when you, when you know the people that you are policing, it makes it easier for you to interact with them. So, it keeps everybody safe.
In, in addition to that, in terms of uh police and community re- relationship. Uh, that is so bad in America, everywhere for that matter. Uh, what's about. The composition of the police force in terms of race? Uh, speak to that. What are your ideas or what idea you may have that you want to share? Uh, with the people of Brooklyn Center for which they should say, okay, he's our guy?
So, um, city hall, police departments. Um, should reflect the communities they serve. They should. Um, so, as far as that goes, there has to be a deliberate. And I'm gonna underline there were and emphasize it, deliberate effort. To recruit and train community members. To join the police force, so that the police force, make, the police forces makeup. Reflects the population that they serve. Brooklyn Center is a majority minority city. So, ma- the minorities make up the majority in Brooklyn Center. But its police force is predominantly white. That, that is not a reflection, is not the, the police force reflecting a citizenry.
That's a problem?
It, it, that is a problem. And, and when you start to look and see that most of these police officers, it, it, it just. The first piece is the, 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 the police force is not reflecting the citizenry that is policing. The next thing is the police force does not have, uh, uh, does not have, I think you mean twenty five percent of their, of their, of their officers living in the city. So, you live outside of the city. You don't know the people you're policing. And two, you have a police force that don't look like the people they police. That is a recipe for problem. That's a recipe for problem. And I, and I get tired when people tell me, oh, you know, police forces are around, are around the state, are around the country. I'm trying really hard to recruit people of colors and they can't find it. And my question is always, where are you looking?
Yeah.
Because if you live in Brooklyn Center and you have a lot of minorities in Brooklyn Center, where are you looking that you can't find these people that you need to recruit and train? Where are you advertising? Right? So, I, I think people are deliberate about that. They just pay lip service to it.
So, uh, what, 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 what training, I mean, not, not training, but recruitment strategy. Uh, will you propose to the city, uh, should you be elected in terms of recruitment? We have colleges, community colleges, or we have, we have a community college in our community. We have high school in our, in our, in our, in our, in our, uh, uh, city. So, those are institutions that provide opportunity for recruitment. How can you suggest something in that line?
So, I teach in the only high school that is located in the city.
Okay.
I've been there nine years now. And that high school is a STEAM school. So, STEAM is science, technology, engineering, arts and mathematics. STEAM. So, we focus on that. That is a breeding ground. Of potential leaders and police officers. So, the first thing is, the city. Should be using that because that is a resource, that is a base, a recruitment base that is right within the city. And oh, by the way, my school district is at least eighty percent students of color.
Okay.
So, if you, if you're looking to recruit people of color, there is a base right there. The other thing is, look. If you go and you say you, you're looking for a job, you're advertising a job. And your advertisement is on, 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 on city, C R, that Brooklyn Center, da, 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 M N, da, da. Let's be fair, culturally, how, how, how do people, how do our people look for jobs? How do we get our information? The way you advertise tells us the, the, the people you advertising to and the people that you want.
And maybe the result that you want.
And the result that you want. Because if you truly and truly are deliberate about recruiting people. Look, our people, we get most of our news at a barber shop. At a beauty shop, at the churches, at the mosque. Are you dropping off flyers in those places? Are you making your presence there? And or if you want the Liberians and, and, and maybe the, the, the Latinos population, go to the soccer fields. Right? Are you making your presence felt in those places or are you only posting something on your website to check a box and say, yes, we advertise, but nobody came along? So, the advertising strategy that you use determines who hears your message. And it lets us know who you actually want to hear your message in the first place.
And Mister Goya.
My own school district.
Another component is the residents of the city. Hey, it can be any other city, but in this case, it's, in that case, we're talking about the city of Brooklyn Center. Alright? Parents are key. The people of color don't trust the police. How can you motivate, encourage them? That if you want to see the change you want, so that your black child will not be. My hand up by a police officer down the street someday, then you have a responsibility. How can you convince the parents by encouraging them that their children, their boss children. Need to be the one to police themselves or the very community they live in. How can you convince them?
So, first thing first, let's lay out here that, um, there is a reason that uh, um, um, black communities. Um, have a trust issue with the police and it's, and it's, and it's deep in, in racism. Uh, in Jim Crow and, 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 and in the KKK culture. So, um, there, there, there is a legitimate right. Um, for their distrust and their fear. Now, having said that, I know there are a lot of students. And a lot of people who live in the city who just want the opportunity to serve the city. They want the opportunity to, to be able to serve their communities. But the opportunity has not been given. So, this does not require a convincing. I don't think this requires a convincing. Uh, 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 it, it, it just requires an opportunity being provided. And letting, letting people know that these opportunities are there. Because I guarantee you, if you saw what happened in Minneapolis recently.
Right.
Um, there were some people who came out to, to protect their streets. They had guns. Black people to protect their streets, civilians. So, if those people are doing it. Or if there's, if they, if they felt a need to do it, I guarantee you they want to do it for their cities. They will want to join their police forces. But what happened quite too often, as in education also, there are so many roadblocks that are put into place. That make sure, and they are designed for that, to make sure that less people of color enter these prof- these professions. Right? There are so many roadblocks. So, we have to look at what the, uh, what the, uh, what the requires, the requirements are. For, for, for being, for being a certified police officer, a police officer in this state. We have to start looking at those. And start changing some of those, some of those requirements. And, and some of those requirements that, that are, that are just basically testing your whiteness. It's the same thing we do in the school. And so, you know, it's less people think that we just talking stuff and we don't take action. I serve on, on the uh, on PLSB, which is the Professional Educational Licensing Board. And that is the, that is the board that, that determines, you know, if you're gonna renew your teaching licensure or your, 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 your educational license. Uh, uh, let me, let me say. And, and, and also M T L E, which gives the test. That you have to. That's right. When I thought that, when we talked those tests, we started to find out that, look, the test, the math portion of it especially. It's not testing mathematical aptitude as much as it's testing your whiteness. And I came out against it. And when we pushed that, M T L E for the last year and a half now, I have been on their committee rewriting their math portion. To make sure that their math portion test your ability, answering when you take it. It's testing your math ability. Not how much you know about American culture and how white are you, right? So, we made those changes over there. We also are making those changes on PLSB. Even the S A T, that case stick. When we look at their test, we determine that there were so many questions in them that were biased. And when we made a noise, I had a contract.
And when you said bias against people of color?
So, so there are some questions in there, yeah, against people of color. There are some questions in there mathematically you can ask. That has nothing to do with um the math content and more about um, how much whiteness do you have? So, let me point, let me give a quick example. When I came from Liberia, I went to uh, I went to Texas Tech. In Texas. Um, and when I got to Texas. A lot of my people say, well, Texas Tech does not accept a lot of black people, they are racist. It's a very good school, very great engineering and math school. Um, and, and I said, well, that's where I wanna go. Said, well, they're not gonna accept that. So, I said, I'm gonna go. So, I wrote my application. And they had me taking an aptitude test. So, I, I went to take my aptitude test. I took the test and I scored horribly. So, when I got out, my dad is like, man, you told me you knew math from Liberia. Yeah, I'm like, but, I said, but there was something in there I didn't know. So, he said, what? I said, well, they were asking about a trout, trout and chandelier. Okay, there were word problems, two word problems. One of them had trout and that trout probably had about seven different questions underneath it. And the chandelier probably had, I think about six or seven questions that followed. I was sitting in their room thinking that chandelier was a mathematical concept. Or that trout was a mathematical concept that I hadn't learned in Liberia. So, when I spoke to the woman, I had a lady that was giving me back my test result. I said, ma'am, can you help me please? What, and I showed her the word. I said, what is the trout in, in, in mathematics and what's the chandelier? She, she cracked her laughing. She said, a trout is a fish. And the chandelier is the light that hangs from the ceiling. I came from Liberia. We didn't have that. I grew up in Liberia, so please don't judge me. I didn't have chandelier in my house.
No.
So, because I did not know that a trout is a fish. You see, so, that, that was just in there to test my American-ness, right? Or, 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 or my access to wealth about chandeliers. So, when the lady.
They're in mathematics.
Yeah. The lady said, now that you know this, if you were to take that test back, I said, can I take it? She go, yeah. I went by, I took the test. I, ju- just so you know, I got placed in calculus two. I didn't take a college lab. I didn't take pre-calculus. I didn't take calculus one. I got placed in calc two. Because now, they were testing my mathematical aptitude. Not my American-ness or my access to wealth to know what a chandelier is. It's the same thing we do when people ask you, if you pick a card from a deck of cards, what are the probabilities that it would be a, 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 uh, uh, a queen of hearts? What if you've never played cards before? What if the culture you come from forbids gambling? Like Islam, for example.
Right.
So, now we're testing your American-ness. And so, we made that noise to S A T. And I was giving a contract along with other people. We sat and we rewrote the S A T. So, the new S A T map when you take it.
Right.
That's your African brother, your Liberian brother, your black brother was a part of writing that. And so, those are the, we're asking for when we come to city council. We're not just making a noise because we wanna make it. We have the lived experience in bringing changes.
Alright. Thank you, uh, folks in Savaspace. Uh, my name is Asunensia, hosting your Focus on Liberia. This is our program, The Hour of Politics. My guest is Mister Sisegoya. He is a candidate for a city council position in the city of Brooklyn Center. And earlier, we talked about dual citizenship. He's a librarian as well and he, he gives his opinion there. And we talked about the labyrinth government performance and he was able to give his opinion. Now, we are talking about Minnesota politics. Like I said, he's a candidate for a city. We are talking about Minnesota politics. Like I said, he's a candidate for a city council post in the city of Brooklyn Center. And we are talking about what other things he would like to see changed in that city, uh, as a citizen and as a candidate. Uh, before I come to how you're running and what party and all that, my last question, let's talk about, you know, uh, social reforms. And because of time, I will just ask for one. Rent, housing is a major thing, especially in, uh, minority communities. Uh, many of those folks who live in this community are not making that much. But what we see is that rent mortgages are going up every year. I have one and I see it. And you as a community person, uh, knows that as well. What change you would like to see there?
So, uh, uh, coincidentally, housing is one of the pillars on my, on my platform. Uh, because, um, I see quite a few of my students that come to me, either homeless or, or their, their families are struggling to maintain their home or to find, uh, places that are livable, that are affordable and livable to live. So, um, that is one of the platforms, uh, because I believe I need to address the issues that happen in my community in order to address the issues that happen in my classroom. So that I can teach my students to live the American dream, whatever that means, and to excel. So, uh, to that end, I do believe that, um, the city needs to do a lot more in having quite a lot more affordable housing. But not just affordable, it has to be livable and respectable. Just because the, uh, the housing is affordable does not mean it has to be infested with rodents. There were quite a few, um, apartments in, in Brooklyn Center complexes, and we had to, 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 to bring this out. You know, at one point in time against one of the, the, uh, those landlords, that was affordable somewhat, but things are broken. And when the tenants score, the landlord does not go to take care of them. And the argument from the landlord has been, if I fix all of these things, then I have to increase the rent. So pretty much you, uh, you were telling people to pick between living in squalor and in slump or, and paying, and, and paying what they can afford, or raising the rent where they can't afford it in order to live like human beings. And I think, I don't think that, that there should be a choice given to anybody. Right? So what a city has to do is to be able to, to A, have a renters contract. And that's what we want to have. We want to have a renters contract, where it's, it's, it's a social contract between, and it's enforce, uh, enforceable that protects the rights of tenants and also protect the rights of landlords. Because let's get it straight, some of the landlords are, are residents of the city and they're business people. But we have to have a contract that makes sure that, that tenants and, I mean, that landlords are treating the tenants like human beings. So that somebody don't, nobody has to live with rodents in their houses. And when they call you and you take weeks to show up and you're giving them this forced choice that if I fix this leak in your house, then I have to increase your rent. So you have to increase my rent simply because I'm asking that I live like a human. And so the city has a lot of work to do with that. As far as rising rent and the rising mortgages, Brooklyn Center is unique. In this small city of ours, um, we have four school districts, four school districts with taxing rights. So we passed levies, um, to support the schools. Anoka Hennepin, um, picks up in Brooklyn Center, so they can also tax in Brooklyn Center. Um, uh, 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 I C O School District picks up in Brooklyn Center, same way. Uh, Robbinsdale School District picks up in Brooklyn Center, same way. Brooklyn Center School District picks up in Brooklyn Center, same way. And so what we have to start doing is for leaders like myself, as city council, to start forming partnership with, um, our leaders at the state level to make sure that the funding calculation for schools are changed. So that this, the, uh, uh, a lot of the money comes from the state and quite a few and lesser amount comes from, uh, taxing the residents of the city. Because, because what happens is, we have, um, a lot of our, our, our homeowners, our senior citizens, they're, they're on fixed income.
Right.
Right? So if, if, if they're on fixed income and you keep increasing their tax load on their homes, then you're about to tax grandma and grandpa out of their house. And some of these people want to retire in their homes. They don't want to go to nursing homes and group homes, however great those places might be. They want to stay at home. But so, so now what you find is you find some of these people making decisions on whether to refill their prescription. Or pay, you know, the new increase in, 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 in their mortgage. And I think those are false choices. We should not ever have our citizens making those, uh, uh, been, uh, uh, put in a position to make those choices. So we have to make those changes.
Thank you. Uh, we have a caller on the line. We will get to that caller. And, uh, so I want you to be brief on this one. And this is something I experienced when I was renting, and many friends do have this similar experience. You're renting in an apartment complex, maybe you're thinking about moving, but you're not sure why. So you say, okay, let me take a six-month lease instead of a one-year lease. Or let me do month-to-month. It's the same quality of living place. Nothing extra is coming. When you are making that decision, but the landlord will say, okay, you don't want to be here for a year, you want to be here for only six months, now your rent is going up by hundred dollars. Or you want to do month-to-month, it's going up by two hundred dollars, two hundred and fifty dollars. How can you change that? I think it's a problem.
Well, it is a problem. And the first thing is, nobody's always explained to me the rationale, uh, behind why they do that.
Yeah.
Right? It might be a business strategy, uh, but, but if, i- it is, it is, it is, it is not a moral strategy. Right? And so that's where this whole contract, a renters contract coming into play, right? And, and, and I like to point out that there are a lot of, a lot of organizations that have been doing this work that, 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 that access to affordable and respectable housing is a human right. So for example, in our own community, ASO is one organization that comes to mind, the African Career Education Resource, uh, Incorporated. Right? Uh, Nalima and, uh, we have some, uh, some system, Nalima and Denise, and all those, they've been doing work on that. Right? So what the city has to do is leverage those organizations. Bring them in and let's have a conversation on how can we, how can we as a city come out with, with, with a process and a system wherein our citizens are not paying more than thirty percent of their income for mortgage or for rent? Because i- i- the, the one piece you didn't account for answering i- in the, in that scenario you created.
Right.
Is that even when you choose to stay.
Yeah.
And renew your one-year contract, your lease, i- i- your lease, it still goes up. Right? So now at your job, you haven't had that much raise. But your rent is going up way above the raise that you received. And so now you're spending more percentage of your tech home pay.
Right.
Than, 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 than you, than you were doing before, right? And so i- i- that for me is, is egregious. And, and, and I think the cities, the city, Brooklyn Center, has to be innovative enough that, yes, the city needs to run with new money.
Right.
Uh, but we, we can, we can, we can, we can diversify the buckets of places we get money from.
Right.
Attract more businesses to the city that will pay livable wages to our citizens. Increase, uh, so we diversify the tax base that way, right? And we, so when we do that, then we can now go back and say, look, you as a landlord cannot and should not be in the position to charge somebody more than thirty percent of their income to pay rent. And then, and then we can find a way to make sure that the tax base on our homeowners are not so high to the point where they are paying more than thirty percent of their income to pay their mortgage. That is not right.
Thank you. Uh, um, let's take this caller, and then after that, we come to, uh, what are, which we party uh, you're going with in this election. And, and, and is there any contender? And, and can you commit that you and that contender can come back here on Focus on Liberia in a live debate that will be broadcast here on Focus on Liberia? We want to know whether that's something you can commit to. So let me bring in the caller here quickly.
Yeah, yeah, uh, thank you, Ashton. And this is William King here, Focus on Liberia. Mister Sizik, uh, hello, good afternoon. I think it's afternoon over there. Uh, I've been listening to, uh, to stuff that you happen to, um, to, uh, say. I want to first just commend you and, uh, on what you're trying to, um, do. Um, I was listening to you and, uh, I like your analogies and the stories. And, um, I think that they're very relatable to the people in the community that you, um, living in. So just want to wish you best of luck, my brother, uh, definitely encouraging you and everything, and looking forward to more success. And, uh, just so you know, for that whole trout thing, my man, you could have just said snapper. The chandelier, you could have, you could have used candle. Or, or karsten lantern. But brother, uh, we are, we're watching you, just want to encourage you and, uh, the best of, uh, luck. Thank you so much.
Thank you, my brother. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, that was Willen King there. He is a partner here at Focus on Liberia. Let me read a few comments, uh, Mister Goya, then I will come to you. Let me come here. Uh, I have, uh, many, many, uh, this is Nanen, uh, someone said beautiful. Uh, then Oscar Shemar writes, we are not hearing you, Mister Goya. Okay, I think that was when we started. And then, uh, Roosevelt Cummings, Washington from Medtronic Plymouth. Uh, yeah, he is a friend. Uh, Evelyn Mamita writes, yes, that's true. And it's because our leaders and lawmakers are spineless and very corrupt. Uh, Evelyn, again, we need people like him, the name people like you. And, uh, Jeanette writes, if you are a leader, you lead by being obedient to the laws of the land. That was when we were talking about the rule of law. And then Dean's right, Brother Goya is so very right. Our country lacks mature leadership, a government that cannot take responsibility of its mistakes. It is incapable of doing the right thing. And then, uh, Passaway writes, uh, this is Aliu Passaway, you are oppositions. So you will not see anything possible. My man, uh, they, 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 they're sticking their opposition lever on all, my man. And then, uh, Grant writes, yes, that relationship needs to be built between the police and the community. Totally agree with you. Officers need to live in a community. They are serving any services that provide human. Any services that provide human services, according to this writer, uh, asks for that relationship between the provider, let me see more here, and the person they serve. Uh, you get a successful outcome. I think the person is saying that if you live in the community and you're providing services in our community, you tend, intend to get a successful outcome. Uh, this is Butler, Butler writes, everyone deserves it. It's a human right issue, quality affordable housing. No one should have to pay more than thirty percent of their income on rent or budget. My man, the people are with you here. You are right on spot. Uh, Butler, Denise Butler, yes.
Yeah, she works for ASO. That's the sister that been doing work on this, on, on housing for a long time. So let me give a shout out to her on that. That, that's all, that's all, please.
All right, Darlene Butler again, yes, yes, that section with our representation needs to go. And then Willen King, who just called, the officers can move into the community and also we can act from within the community. Great one. Few comments there, uh, from folks of you and us, uh, uh, of Facebook here. So Mister Goya, uh, we are almost to the end. I have two more questions and then we'll wrap it up, my brother. And you are running. Are you running as a Republican or are you running as a Democrat?
So, um, city councils, uh, city council races, um, especially in Brooklyn Center, uh, none, uh, they are non-partisan. But, um, having said that, I, I, I am proud to say that I am endorsed by the Democratic Party. So I, I am an endorsed candidate of the D F L, uh, and, and I, and I've got to put it out there. I, 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 I am a Democrat. But I am not running as a Democrat because the seat is non-partisan. I am endorsed, um, by the D F L.
Wow, how, how, how brilliant is that, that at a city level, you don't bring your party thing? And, and isn't that brilliant?
They do that till you don't bring your party thing, so.
Okay, and, and, and what is the rationale beyond that? I- i- is that going to have to, you know, suppress some, you know, uh, influences there?
I, I don't know. I don't know. I want to know that at a school board level, it makes a lot of sense because, you know, uh, and I think that's what they're trying to, they're trying to copy, uh, from what happens at a school board that, you know, it doesn't matter what my ideology is. Uh, whether I'm a Republican or not, all students are supposed to be treated equally and fairly and have access to quality education. And I think that's what they're trying to do is to get the, 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 the rigid political, uh, 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 um, politicalness, or if that's a word. The rigid politics out of, uh, our city governance, because the city is supposed to be so small and we're supposed to live together as family, as a community. And so it should not matter what, I, I am a Democrat or Republican. What should matter is my heart and how I want my city to improve. And I think that's what they look at when they, when they decided that it should be a non-partisan race. That we know, I can come at this, I see Zigoya, and I know that, 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 that there should be renters right. And I know that there should be community empowerment, and I know that there should be accountability. I know that there should be jobs in my city, um, that pay livable wages. I can come at those without being a Democrat, without, you know, saying, oh, is this a democratic talking point? Like just a Republican talking point. I think that's where they're going.
Wow, that, 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 that makes a lot of sense. You know, it's like, uh, in the family. Uh, whether or not I belong to the Democratic Party, you belong to the Republican Party. When we are home as a family, we talk family and they want the cities to be family and not worry about the national politics. That is so brilliant. And so the last one, can you commit here, Focus on Liberia, that whatever your challenger is, you will come here to a debate on the issues. And at that time, we will be able to go into more issues, talking about your platform and all that. Is that something you can commit to?
Absolutely, anywhere, anytime. Um, so, um, just so you know, and to the viewing public out there, we have a primary coming up. Because there are seven of us as of today that, um, are running for, for the two seats that are available in Brooklyn Center. And so because of that, we have to have a, an August eleventh primary uh, to kind of, you know, uh, uh, lower down the amount of candidates in the field. Um, so yes, I, I will be willing, because anywhere there is a conversation about how do we see what city governance should be and how can we improve the life and livelihood of our beloved city? I'll be, I would be willing to come there. Uh, on Focus on Liberia, I will come. Um, so yes, yes, I will be willing to have a conversation uh, at any level on how we can improve the lives and livelihood of our people. Uh, but August eleven is a primary, so let me try to do that. Let me try to let people know right now that if you live in Brooklyn Center, you have to vote twice. Uh, August eleven is a primary and then, you know, the general election. So it's almost like if you play soccer, this is like the semifinals, you got to first go to the semifinals to make it to the finals. You know, I want to, I want to keep impressing my brother King that said he likes the analogy, because you know, I'm a teacher, so I pull a lot of analogies, so.
Right.
We have a semifinals and then we're going to go to the finals.
Uh, is there any other person in that race who is, I mean, who like you is from Liberia?
Yes, yes. Um, Afida Daniels. Afida Daniels is, um, is also endorsed by the Democratic Party. And she is, she was also born in Liberia.
All right, uh, let, let, tell me also, the two of you, uh, running, and you said there are two seats. Are you people in the same, do they have like districts or there's no district level? I mean, how is it done there? I just want to get.
In Brooklyn Center, we don't have wards and we don't have districts. You run, uh, a lot, so you run through the entire city.
Okay, so what I'm getting is that two positions up for grab. So if all of you contest, it will be like the two person with the highest vote will give, you know, city council seat A and B. Is that how it is?
Yeah, the two, the two candidates with the two highest votes get both, get the seats, yeah.
Okay, and if it were like a general election, let's say there are seven seats and all seven seats were for reelection or so. Uh, would it be the same format? You know, all the candidates contest, maybe if, assuming there are seven seats. And then the seven candidates, the first seven candidate with the highest vote would get the seats. Is that why?
So first, in, in August, you'll be cutting down the number of people that'll be on the ballot from November.
Okay.
But, uh, so, but then in November, uh, the, the two candidates with the most, um, um, of votes get the city council seats.
All right.
So you just have to make it out of the field of seven in Au- in August to make it to, to November elections.
All right, uh, to our labyrinth sister who is also in the race, uh, please, uh, share her contact with. All right, uh, to our labyrinth sister who is also in the race, uh, please, uh, share her contact with us here at Focus on Liberia. We would like to have her. And because, yeah, at Focus on Liberia, we educate, we elevate, we promote all things Liberia. And she is a Liberian. And we want to be, uh, fair and want to do justice to her. And so she would not say, oh, okay, uh, she said that man, so you guys brought her to say, and you guys are forgetting your own sister. We don't want to be like that.
No, she's a, she's a strong, articulate, uh, 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 Liberian woman. Um, she is my sister. So I will be sharing her her information with you so you reach out to her.
Yes, and I would like to have that to do that quickly today. On that note, folks in Savaspace, this is how we'll come to the end of our broadcast. We will get a parting statement, uh, from our guests. So, uh, please, Liberia is in despair. Minnesota is in despair. Give us some hope to close, two minutes.
So first thing in Liberia, I am a proud Li- uh, 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 born Liberian and and nothing will ever take that away from from me. Um, I don't, I I am not an opposition, um, to Liberia. I'm an opposition to people who, um, um, willfully violate the rule of law. Um, I do see on the horizon that there are still, there are still opportunities, um, for this government. There are still opportunities for the government in Liberia to make changes that will in- impact positively the lives of the people who got out in the street in the rain and in the mud to dance and to vote for this, for this government. This government still has the ability to turn things around. This government still has a lot of geniuses. And it's in these parties, in it to 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 bring to the table, to ensure that they can change the, uh, Liberia and make sure that the hope and change that the people voted for can be delivered to them. Um, having said that, uh, we don't just criticize, we also offer opportunities and help. I have reached out so many times to the Minister of Education to offer my services free of charge, um, as a consultant, free. I I don't want to get a government job. I'm happy with the job I got here, but I'm willing to lend my expertise to my motherland, um, to help out in reformatting and and helping out the education system. Now in Minnesota and in Brooklyn Center, um, we are all still, uh, in pains, uh, for what we watched, uh, 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 um, the eight minutes, uh, plus video of 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 of, uh, police officer murdering, um, um, a black man. Um, but let's get this really, really straight, that, uh, George Floyd cried that day. Said, get your knees off my neck. And for far too long, for far too long, um, the system in America, because it is based in in racism, has had its knees on the neck of of black communities and all communities of color and all poor communities for too long. And that can be in so many different ways. So let's not just only concentrate on policing. It is in education. It's also in housing. It is in, it is in, it is in jobs and 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 access to jobs. So when I see students come to my classroom that come from homes where their parents are trying, they have to work two jobs just to maintain the household, that is the knee of, uh, that is the knee on the neck of their household. When 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 folks have to spend more than thirty percent of their income on housing, that is a knee on the neck of community. When 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 our people do not have access to 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 affordable jobs, that the jobs that pay them respectable, uh, incomes. And they have to work outside of the cities that they live. And we have cities that have become economic wasteland and deserts. That is the knee of systemic, uh, racist America on the neck of communities of colors. So that cry of George Floyd was not only limited to police brutality, it is also in everything systemic. And so I'm running because I see that every day. I see those bootprints on the neck of my students every day when I interact with them and their parents. I have the lived experience. I have the learned experience. And I have the ability and the aptitude and the appetite to create change and move our beloved city together. And like I said to you, as a city councilman, I will always say, thus said the people. So please, please, um, look us up on sisi goya dot com. Um, you can follow me on my, on our campaign page. Uh, please, we need volunteers, we need money. But above all, we need your involvement. We need you to interact with us. Uh, no, uh, August eleven primaries, please come out and vote for us. Because if you don't vote for us, then we don't make it into City Hall. And then we are not able to make those changes that we are advocating. Thank you so much. Thank you, Focus on Liberia. I appreciate you, my brother, for reaching out. And thank you so much for having me on.
Mr. Goya, we want to say thank you so much, uh, for owning our invitation, for sharing your thoughts and the leadership you're providing at the level of the school. Uh, we wish you best of luck that you can take that same aspiration, uh, at the level of the Brooklyn uh, Center City Council. Uh, we wish you well. Here at Focus on Liberia, this is what we do here. We educate, we elevate, we promote our own, meaning all things Liberia, all Liberians. On that note, folks in Savaspace, we want to say thank you for worrying, watching our broadcasts here. Subscribe to our YouTube channel so that you can get notification when we upload any of our shows. Also, like our Facebook page so that when we are live, you will get the notification. It is because of you we do what we do here. On our page, also, we want you to support us. We have a Focus on Liberia T-shirt that you can buy. You go to the website, it all, it goes to your house. All we want is wear a material that carries Focus on Liberia. That's all. We don't want your money, but promote what we do so that we can be here to talk about the things that affect us all, not only as Liberians, but also as part of the human race. Thank you and bye-bye. We are going with this song that says, we are all Liberians. Bye-bye.